Okay, good evening everybody. So, this is the, I'm gonna call the Wednesday, March 14th Board of Selectmen meeting, I'm gonna call it to order. At 5:30 we're gonna meet with the Free Town Water and Sewer Commissioners to discuss the possible water line on Chase Road. Under consent agenda, we have vote, I know, on recommendation for the water line article, approved sign, reserve fund request submitted by the Highway Department, approved fire evavements for the month of February 2018 as submitted by Chief Sylvia. Under personnel, we have approved new employment applications, approved and signed change of status for Kenneth List submitted by Charles Maycomer, discussed and approved hiring of an independent analysis, and discussed part-time zoning enforcement officer, or agent. And then we're gonna go into executive session to talk none other than our favorite topic, Excel. So, with that being said, is anybody taping the meeting? Okay? And the Board of Selectmen also?
Steven Chandler from the Water Department.
The Water Department. Do you guys wanna come up so we can have a conversation, or would you like to talk from like a distance? Please. Oh, go over here though. You don't have to stand.
Please stand before us.
Oh, I thought we had to kneel.
You have to kiss your ring.
Sorry.
No, that was good.
Okay.
Chandler, come on up.
I gotta make sure that my voice is off.
The back of the camera won't catch you.
Oh, no.
I wish I could.
Good luck with that.
Phone didn't ring?
I have a bit of electricity.
Okay, so, the reason we're here is to discuss the water line that will extend from Brayley Road down to Chase Road, and will help not only the future plans for the police station, but also the current FES, Free Town Elementary School, and anything else that we have going forward on that parcel of land. So, we have the engineering cost from Environmental Partners. Ryan was really nice the other day to talk to us over the phone and explain everything. I'm gonna lay that on your shoulders, so our general audience can also... George, you wanna come up as well? Okay. So, our general audience can, you guys, Bob and Andy, do you guys wanna come up too? Because this will impact you as well. So, the cost of the total project is $5 million. And I'm gonna ask you to, I'm gonna turn it over to the Water Commissioners at this time to talk a little bit about what that $5 million will entail. And I'm not sure who the sports president is on that.
Well, these have the paperwork. This project, which, can you talk a little louder please, or we can hear you? Get a microphone.
Or maybe turn around.
This project was a project that came out of meetings over the Free Town Police Station. And there's a number of things that have to be done at that site, where we have to store water, water police station, and provide protection and so forth. We also have the elementary school that is on two wells, and one of which is, what, 18 years old they believe it is? And they've replaced one of the wells already. Every time you put a well in, there's so many feet diameter, that prevention from using the land, you have to be so far away from it. So, in discussions at the planning for the project, Police Department project, the thought of having the water line come up Chase Road to feed the police station, the COA, the school, the Highway Department, the school, came up, and it would also feed people on Chase Road that wanted to tie into it. The primary reason that it was brought up by the committee was so we'd have good fire protection for any new development that the town may choose up there. Fire station, a new police station, a new COA, a library, and so forth as we move forward. So, the Selectmen asked to have a study done. Environmental Partners did the study, and they came up with a proposal. And the $5 million is on the high end, because they always have contingencies built in. But the bottom line is to run a 12-inch main from Brayley, the intersection of Brayley, Gurley, and Chase Road Extension there, all the way up Chase Road, to have sufficient water to meet the needs of not only what's going on now, but for future growth. But actually, if you think of it, it's gonna be like a spine on anybody that wants to pick off that water. And when you get to Bullock Road, you could go either way at some point later on down the line. But anyway, the bottom line here is that they're gonna run a 12-inch main, they're gonna go with hydrants at the normal required period, which I don't know what it, what is it, Kevin? How many?
400 to 500.
400 to 500 feet, every 400 to 500 feet. And we have to, one of the expenses, we have to go underneath the railroad tracks, and we have to put a booster pump down by the Highway Department to increase pressure. Not that the pressure coming off our regular booster pump down on Brayley Road, Chippaway where Chippaway meets Brayley in Bedford, if you guys are familiar with that. This is to increase the pressure of the water, not the volume, the pressure of the water. If we have a catastrophic fire, there's enough, we can turn the pumps on there and produce a necessary pressure to fight a fire. So, from a guy that's not an expert in water, that's the bottom line. If Kevin or anybody else wants to chime in and correct any of my mistakes, if I had any, please do so.
I might just add that they are having, they've had water quality issues here at the school.
Yes.
And they're continuing to have, they're having to treat the water. And if it gets any worse, you would be, end up being probably forced into it. Because they can only put so many wells because of the closeness of the buildings, and every time you put the well in...
400 feet.
400 feet added around that well, you can't put any buildings.
Didn't touch it.
Kevin, do you have anything to add?
No, I think Paul hit all the important parts. This was born out of a conversation and a need with the Building Committee, excuse me. I know that Environmental Partners understood the fact that this isn't ain't money, is no object. So, they worked with us to come up with the best cost that they could, and the best assessment of which direction we should go in. And we had multiple choices, and I think the one that we decided to go with is the most practical and least expensive for what we want to do relative to the longevity of the system. So, no, I don't have anything further to add. Paul said it best, we need another booster pump station, and that will help fight the fires. But additionally, should we want to expand, we could use that booster pump station to help expand the system. But other than that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead. Can you just state your name for the record? And just so you know, we're gonna go through all of this again when we have our regular special time meeting.
Wayne McDonald, I'm Chase Road, I live on 191 Chase Road. Question is, the pipeline on Brayley Road, how big is that pipe? 12-inch? It is a 12-inch. And how's that, I talked to people on Brayley Road, and they said the pressure that they have is ridiculously low. If their low...
They talked to you, Wayne?
I've talked to certain people, yes. And they said, if, I'm saying if their pressure is low, how can the pressure coming all the way down Chase Road gonna be in good condition?
Well, the good, you know, the good part is, Environmental Partners was kind enough when they did this, so I've got it existing conditions. And at no point in time on Brayley Road is there a pressure at the street less than 49 PSI. So, it leaves 72 PSI from our pump station, gets boosted up from 52 to 72. So, as long as it stays on that particular elevation, it's gonna stay reasonably the same, okay? As it starts to go up elevation, it goes down to 49 PSI, but by the time it gets back down to the Chase Road intersection, it's at 66 PSI. Now, if you're telling me that there's people, when people complain about low water pressure, I haven't heard it. I've been in a lot of those homes over there. A lot of them are like, mine was for the longest time. The interior plumbing was insufficient, you know, to carry the volume of water that you need. So, I don't...
35 or 22 feet without a pump station. Take your one.
Yeah, take your one.
One more question.
Yep. Yeah, I just, if you happen to talk to these folks and they have low water, encourage them to call me.
I try, but they don't. You know how some people are. That's why I came. Another question is, this price of $5 million, does that include the second pump station?
Yes, oh yeah, yes.
And we'll talk about, a little bit about the financing of that on our second piece right now, so.
And the construction, and that includes the reconstruction basically of the trench and everything else on Chase Road?
What it includes is, it includes the temporary trenching and then a more, of two-inch asphalt, and a more permanent trenching patch with a four-inch asphalt. The Highway Superintendent already has plans to do a complete overlay, if I'm not mistaken, of Chase Road. We talked with him so that we worked in concert, we didn't want to redouble our efforts, you know? We didn't want him to asphalt and then us tear it up with a trench. We also didn't, you know, so we wanted to work in concert. So, that helped take some of the cost away. So, yes, it includes all asphalt work, any drainage work, multiple culverts, the rail crossing, the installation of the second pump station, the installation of generators at both of those pump stations, and the installation of the water service line and fire line to go into the site of the proposed police station.
And the kidding, and that, every lot, if this is packed, there'll be a connection unit, so if somebody wants to...
There'll be curb stops, put, the plan is now to put curb stop at every lot that's there.
Every lot existing and future?
Every lot that exists.
Exists, Kevin.
Exists.
All right, now, other question. On the hydrants, now, where are you gonna place the hydrants adjacent to the road? Are they gonna be at the road that it is now, or what it is for future? Because the road is, obviously, we know, it's all, it's not big enough.
I will tell you this, I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. We haven't even voted to do the funding. We haven't even, we haven't drawn up the plans.
But if people want to vote yes or no, we want to know what we're voting for.
Right. We're voting to put a new water line in. The engineering has not been done, because there is a, there is a cost with the engineering.
Yeah.
This is an estimate for, to do the entirety of the project.
Including the engineering?
Including the engineering.
Okay.
So, when it comes time to do the engineering, I can't answer your question and be honest with you, okay?
All right.
The fact of the matter is this, anytime that we've had a water line, new water line put in, we've always tried to work in concert with the property owners, and with thought of further expansion. So, if you're saying, right now Chase Road is a, we'll just call it a number, a 35-foot layout, let's just say, right? And you're thinking that in the future, the town may want to expand that to a 60-foot layout, a 40-foot layout, a 50-foot layout. The water occurrences or the water infrastructure are gonna be put to a supposed layout. Excuse me, I don't think that would be the case. It could only be put on short of us getting easements on everybody's property, and us being able to see the future to say, okay, yeah, we know we're gonna expand this road. I think it would all be placed within the road layout as it exists. Now, the fact of the matter is, should we expand the road layout at some point in time, all those, all that infrastructure, i.e. the hydrants, you can just extend those back to the new...
Right, but that's just adding costs later.
No, no, I understand what you're saying.
We don't need.
But, but I don't, this is the first I'm hearing of low water pressures over there, the first I'm hearing, and now we're thinking about expanding Chase Road.
Well, you know...
I haven't heard that before, so...
If you're gonna do it one way, it's gonna go down one side or the other of Chase Road, so now...
Within the road layout.
You can't patch Chase Road with, because most, 90% of Chase Road is chip sealed, at like 4, 5, 6, whatever's there now.
Right.
You cut that off, and you go to put regular 4, 5, 6 inches of asphalt next, they're not gonna stay together.
No, that's why the Highway Superintendent says you're gonna do a complete overlay.
Okay, well, that, that's precise, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother thing.
He had it planned already, and he's old enough to see about the line.
Well, dude, you're gonna go, dude, we're gonna expand Chase Road.
Yeah, they, and here we are, 30 years later, and it hasn't happened. Okay? So, my point is, we're gonna engineer for what sits there today, I would imagine, okay? And then, should it ever arise that we have to expand, or, then, we could, I think, attack that problem then. But right now, the Water Department was approached because, hey, we have a need. New fire station, we have well problems at the school here, we'd like to get fire service up here for all the buildings. This is what they asked us to do. Come up, give us an estimate, what do it cost to bring a water line down? Never once was it stated a consideration to, you know, a future wider layout of Chase Road. So, but, you guys know, with water lines, it's just a matter of disconnecting a few things, the trench and doing it. Is there a cost? Yes. But 30 years ago, we talked about this, we haven't done it yet, and it's not on our radar, so...
It's definitely not on the radar, not on the radar.
That's, that's one of the, yeah, bigger problem.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
I got a question. You can take one up. My name's Mark Rysowski from 115 Chase Road. What is the proximal cause of the problem with the water in this school? Is it lack of, lack of source, water source, or is it contaminated water?
I don't know all that much about it, but I will say this, because I just, I dislike when I hear words like contaminated or poisoned. No, no, so I'm gonna clear it up, Mark.
The time of the water?
It's not, excuse me, contaminated water.
Okay.
My understanding is, they have a higher, I think manganese or magnesium in it, they filter it out. So, there's a cost of filtering the water out and making sure it's good. There's also a cost to the maintenance of the filters. That's what we were told.
What does, has a study been done to show what percentage of the water that's utilized by this facility and the Police Department, and future Police Department and municipal center that may be built, what percentage of that is literally getting flushed down the toilet versus being consumed by humans or used to wash hands and faces? In other words, which portion is...
The simple answer is, and again, I think we're getting...
You don't know?
We weren't charged with that.
Okay.
We were asked to come up with a cost. This is a very preliminary, we were asked to come up with a cost of bringing a water line down Chase Road. That's it.
Simple question, I'm gonna answer.
Yeah, and what we did was, we reached out to our contract engineer and asked that they would take on that, and they did.
And is this process of installing a water line passing by, so, passing by residences, are those owners of those lots and or residences going to be charged with betterment charge, assessed a betterment?
No.
And their taxes?
No.
There will be no betterment assessed?
Do they have to tie into this well?
No.
Okay, now we get the biggest problem ever. I live on 178...
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Gary Mendez, I live on 178 Chase Road. I have a swell, it's eight feet deep over a natural spring, never runs out of water, produces 40, 50 gallons a minute. We don't know where the spring's running, you guys ain't touching the water near my well, otherwise I'm gonna sue for top dollar, okay? And I have it tested every two years, so...
What was the question, Gary?
I have a well 20 feet from the road, I feed my sprinkler system and my drinking water. It's crystal clean, never runs out of water, it's eight feet deep, it's 20 feet right there off the road, you know where it is?
Yeah.
What's gonna happen if that gets screwed up? I, I'm ready to blow up over this.
I'm not sure what I understand your question.
My well is eight feet deep, it's 20 feet from the road. If the spring runs across the street where these guys are digging 10 feet deep and my well gets screwed up, what's gonna happen? I'm gonna wanna, I'm not gonna say no. It's been there 50, 60 years, so...
But then he said he's gonna have to pay for water? And you're gonna get some free?
If an excavator comes over there, I'm gonna chop the thing in half.
Yep.
That's right.
Does anybody have any questions that I can answer?
I'm sorry for getting crazy, but that well is, I love that well.
No, I, I just...
I love that well like my life.
Okay.
It never ran dry, never. I'll bring everybody to it right out, unscrew the cap, it's crystal clear, like a glass of water.
Okay.
You can see the bottom, it's perfect.
So, you guys dig the ground if you're gonna screw up my well.
He's, I think I understand now. Gary's well is a relatively shallow well.
It's 50, 60 years, that's only a process, it's been there forever.
That's not too far from the edge of the road. He's concerned that should we do an excavation to install a water line, that it may in fact affect the underground spring that feeds his well. His concern is...
It is a spring, it's built over a spring.
Right. So, it is a spring, so it may affect, he's concerned that it might affect it.
That spring has been in the history of Free Town for a long time.
Can you, can you let him answer the question that's been set forth right now?
Yes, ma'am, but there is no question to answer. As soon as you dig, you're gonna screw up the well.
It's my turn right now, and you're in my meeting, and I'm asking you to stop. Thank you. Go ahead.
Gary's concern is if there's any excavation done relative to the installation of the water line, if it affects his spring that runs under the ground, his question is, what is the town gonna do if that happens? Andy?
I think it's, I understand what you're saying, but there's no reason to believe that, we don't know if the, if the spring comes under the road.
We're not gonna find out.
We don't know. Plus, you know... Who's maybe on the other side of the road? Which side of the road is he on?
It's on the north side. You can see the well when you drive down Chase Road.
I got a steel cap bolted over it, I preserved that thing like, like I got gold in there.
Anybody else have any...
You guys all know my house, I get the best lawn on Chase Road.
Okay, does the board have any questions about the water line itself? To Kevin or any of the other members?
You guys all got to be informed.
Yeah, yeah.
The water line, the 12-inch water line, with pump station will be big enough to carry down, if we need to, want to in the future, we can put it down Chase Road. I mean, not Chase Road, um...
So, when by the, what, what?
Bullock and then maybe Slaveridge.
By the Highway Department.
Is that big enough to go down Slaveridge?
Depending on, depending on what kind of expansion. I mean, if we're talking about a host, just a large scale expansion, then maybe they draw water to anything in the future, but...
Volume wise, that would be enough to carry it.
Volume and count, it's a question that...
Pressure.
Do you guys have any questions, or comments?
I have another question.
Hold on, hold on one second, go ahead.
The only comment I got, I read the report, is, I would, I would wanna see the model run against the fire demand for this building. So, he states that approximately 825 GPM, it'll be available at 40. But what is the hydroic demand for this building with all the hosting? Because you wanna cover that at the same time. So, that would be the question for these guys, would be the...
And we did, we did talk about that a little bit in our, when we talked to them, and that's why they left such a high contingency in there, is to ensure that that would be offset through the contingency. So, we're still waiting for those numbers from Bob Suta, so I'm gonna, I'll get to see him tomorrow, but it is covered by the possible contingency.
Yeah, they have the model, it's just a matter of putting load for this building in there and seeing what's modeled up.
They have, but they've tried to get information, probably, they're still waiting for the information.
Can, hey, Ryan estimated of what a building, he didn't have the exact numbers, but from his experience, he had the...
Looks like it's good too, it's, we're just wanting to see it, that's all.
Andy, anything? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Has the Building Commission, or Kevin, have you discussed utilizing the existing water in a new construction from the wells, rather than, how much are we gonna pay, how much is the town gonna pay per cubic foot of water from Bedford? How much are we gonna pay?
Cubic unit, 748 gallons, is $6,050.
Have we done cost analysis, and we probably have it, but cost analysis as to maybe forming the building's floor, the water we flush down the toilets goes, comes out of wells at a lesser cost to the town to basically make it, you know, more eco-friendly in the sense that we're not importing water from Bedford to put underground, to discharge underground, we're taking water from underground and discharging it back into the septic system going underground, because this is a very wet area, and that water migrates down toward Chase Road, as everybody, you know, you can see in the spring, it's very wet. Has any, and probably nobody's thought of that, using a dual system, but if you're building a new building, it's not hard to have a dual system.
Yeah, I'm, Mark, I'm not, again, I think, I think my, I think, I'm not on the Building Committee, haven't been, so I'm not involved with that.
But it's on the record, so it can be...
Right, right. So, to answer your question, I don't know if that's been considered by anyone.
Do they realize that if they dig down two or three feet, they're gonna be in the water over there near my house? I'm just concerned about my well.
I, we've got that.
Okay, okay, as long as I get that message clear.
I got that loud and clear.
If it wasn't for that well, I'm really careless.
Andy, do you have those numbers, well versus water line? If we went and well the new police station, not mentioning the elementary school, but the...
Yeah, something that hasn't been discussed, that either building is a bias of depression. Right now, the school has a cistern, and the, any new building would require a cistern. Fire, a fire station like we're proposing would require over, it's about 30,000 gallon cistern, and needs to be filled with water, and a deep well inside the building of 18 feet deep in the floor. Expensive to construct and expensive to maintain. So, we would save those costs for both the school and any new buildings built on that land near the water system. So, they also have the fire suppression, you know, we have to worry about these buildings as well, which is...
You meant police station, not fire station?
Yeah.
Police station, sorry, and the school.
The other thing is, every time you dig well, you use land, valuable land that you can use for other buildings. That's a important issue here, because if, if we don't have the wells, then all this land is recovered, so we can build a future, you know, library, house on age and so forth. Every time you sink a well, you're losing 400 foot of water, so... That's an important issue. So, the police station hasn't gone through yet, the new police station, that they're recommending? No.
We haven't voted on the new police station yet, no.
No, 'cause I'm hearing police station, new police station, I said, oh, wait a minute. You're assuming or you're thinking in the future of a new police station?
No, so, several years ago, the town, town, at town meeting, we appropriated money for a feasibility study. Through that feasibility study was born a Building Committee. Through that Building Committee, and after months of meetings and discussions, the Building Committee voted to recommend building a police station first. So, for the last year and a half, about a year and a half, for the last year and a half, the Police Station Building Committee has been meeting and has had many discussions about what our, what our police station needs are. We have several members of the Police Department on it, the Board of Selectmen, some residents. So, we've been meeting regularly, all of our meetings are available online, and now our engineering plans have moved forward, and we're just getting ready to get a cost estimate on that.
I'm being real to appropriate money to do the engineering.
Right. And town meeting...
No, so several years ago, the town, town, at town meeting, we appropriated money for a feasibility study. Through that feasibility study was born a building committee. Through that building committee and after months of meetings and discussions, the building committee, um, voted to, um, recommend building a police station first. So for the last year and a half, about a year and a half, for the last year and a half, the police station building committee has been meeting and has had many discussions, um, about what our, what our police station needs are. Um, we have several members of the police department on it, um, the board of selectmen, um, some residents. Um, so we've been meeting regularly, um, all of our meetings are available online. And now our engineering plans have moved forward, um, and we're just getting ready to get a cost estimate on that.
I mean, real to appropriate money to do the engineering.
Right, and, and town meeting also appropriated the money for a, a project manager and for, um, to move forward with engineering plan.
Okay, can I ask you a question, I know, I think they were a while. Years ago, they were talking about a new town hall.
Okay, so back to the building committee, before we recommended the police station, we took all of those things into account. We took, um, we looked at the libraries, we looked at the town hall, we looked at, um, the COA, we, we looked at, um, all of our town buildings. And it was a recommendation of the building committee to move forward with the police station because it was the most in dire needs. Second, the town hall with the old schoolhouse on the side of it, we're looking into grants for that because it's in the historic district, that we will more than likely be looking at renovating that and hooking it up to, um, the, um, schoolhouse. So those are all plans, those are all ideas that the building committee came up with, but, um, the building committee voted and approved to move forward with the police station first.
Okay, isn't the, the police station one of the newest buildings? And if it is, why do they have to buy, build a new one?
Actually, the, uh, fire station is one of the newest.
Other than this fire station.
Yeah, other than this fire station, isn't it one of the newest buildings?
It was in seventy-eight.
It was built in seventy-eight.
Charlie, you wanna talk to the dependencies of the police station right now?
First of, if you notice the police station, it is, the outside width of it is three thousand square feet. Inside it's probably about twenty-seven hundred square feet. Most homes, most newer homes in this town are about the same size. So it's totally, completely inadequate. Uh, it was built on the cheap original. That's what happens when you build something on the cheap, you have what we have for a police station. And we could go on a, a, a fine list of the inadequacies of the building. But that's why the building committee decided the first thing we have to do is a police station.
It, it's going to come, that is gonna come back to the voters. Whether you want a new police station or not, will be, um, will have a, a town meeting vote and then it will go to a ballot. And everybody will have the opportunity to vote yes or no. Right now, it's, it's just, everybody has an opportunity or had an opportunity to be on the building committee. The building committee made a decision, we had a police station subcommittee. Now we're doing the best we can with those people and through our project manager and through our engineering, um, services to come up with a plan that is best suited for the town. And then we'll have a town meeting and everybody in town can come to that town meeting and vote yes or no.
Well, I understand.
Now, well, wait, hold on, hold on, we're getting way off track.
No, but no, I know, I don't think we are, because you're, you're talking about spending five million dollars to put a water pipe down Chase Road to supply a police station, to supply a school. Now, if the police station is not here to supply, is it worth it to put a pipe for the school?
For the first time in years, this town has the ability and has the money available to look into the future and say, you know what, we're gonna take care of our infrastructure. Because at some point in time, whether it's you or me or anybody else in this room, whether we're here or not, that has to be taken care of, because this is, this is the center of town. This is where your libraries, future libraries are gonna be, this is where any expansion on the school is gonna take place. This is where the fire department's right down the road. So any expansion, this is our available land, this is what we have available in town. Otherwise, we're gonna go spend money on land, spend money on something else, wells and everything else. We thought it was the best plan because it takes care of good water. Because what happens if we say we're gonna build a police station and all of a sudden we dig a well and we don't have good water? Then who's gonna come back and say, well, why did you do that? Why didn't you look into a water line? So we're looking into all aspects, and right now, our decision, or what we think is the most prudent decision, is to have a water line. So then in the future, you have good water, I, that's great. But the people off of Chase Road don't have good water. And they have five, ten, no, it's not your problem, but it's our.
It's sixty years.
It's everybody's problem, it's, it's a way to make this town better. And for, like I said, the first time in years, this town can look into the future, we have the available money and we can take care of our infrastructure.
Also a water line up on Bullock down the end towards the Dartmouth Line, why don't they just come down Bullock? Bullock Road is thirty feet wide.
We did look at that, it was more money.
The water, the closest water line, the closest water line in Dartmouth is at France Corner Road.
Well, put a half a million in it for me, and I screw up my well.
We, we need to get back to the financing of the project?
This is part of the finance.
Okay, go ahead.
Related to finance, and as far as the water quality for the police station, I think the guests, who are overnight guests at the police station, probably don't complain about the water quality. But what is the rate that we're gonna pay on this five million dollar bond?
So now we'll just get into, and Kim, I'll, how we need you along the way. Thank you. So why I say that we can afford this right now, and after meeting with the town administrator and with, um, the town accountant, we right now have, um, voted at town meeting to put six hundred and fifty thousand dollars away for a water filtration site. But through the hard work of, um, Kevin and the water commissioners, um, they have solved that problem and, um, we don't need the water filtration site. So we're gonna take that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and repurpose it for debt services. We're also gonna apply for, um, a loan through, um, the state revolving loan fund program, um, at a two, at two percent. Um, also, we have some available money, um, through our, um, not, uh, our abatements and exemptions. So we're gonna take some of that and we're gonna start to use it to offset the cost of, um, what our, what the water line is. So, uh, the water line is not a, will not be a debt exclusion. The water line will be paid through taxation, which is our annual town meeting. So it's not gonna be above and beyond your taxes, it's gonna be all included, it's gonna be a budget line item.
Still money, it, it is still approximately about a hundred thousand dollars a year in debt service. It's still money spent. Two and a half percent would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand, or five million, or ninety thousand.
Too much, but you're. The, the problem is that we have a, we have a problem, okay? Part of the problem is that we don't have, we have a, a large piece of land, over fifty acres, between Memorial Drive and the, uh, east line of, uh, the highway department. Though, we cannot use more than probably around fifteen acres now if we were to drill a well for the police station. Because of the, uh, layover, the, the buffer zone that you have to have for a well. So, that's, that's a problem we have to solve. Another thing is, we have to have a, if we didn't have the water line, we're going to have to build a system to hold thirty thousand gallons, okay? Um, the, the value of that is, can be considered wasted money. The, what, what we have to remember is that this water line is, it's not just a water line for, to feed a new police station or to feed a police station. It's infrastructure, okay? And so whether or not the, people who own land along that, along Chase Road, as that water line goes through, they're gonna be, be able to tap into it if they wish, or if they don't wish, they don't have to. But it's also gonna increase the value of their land and any developmental issues that they have in the future.
Has the, has the board, the water board considered expansion beyond, obviously, coming from the Bedford, it comes, it terminates at Memorial Drive or thereabouts? Have they considered, is this main, as long as you're gonna spend five million, maybe spend seven million, maybe it's a sixteen inch main. Maybe it's not big enough to further the, in other words, is the infrastructure planning too, too short sighted? It's only fifty years in the future. What about when it develops further towards the forest?
Mark, to be perfectly honest, where do we draw the line? A twelve, a twelve inch main.
That's, that's, that's the problem with it.
A twelve inch main is a, is a very large supply. You don't have anything more than that. The, a, another issue that we could be facing in the future is King Philip, the, um, proprietor's acres, that area.
Stuggles Way, I mean, there's a lot of other.
They do not have, to my understanding, uh, strong wells in a lot of those places. Whether or not it was contracted, just putting them in, or the other thing is that they just don't have the, the draw, they just can't get the draw. I, my understanding is that people have had to frac, uh, wells that are there now. And so, you're, you're bringing a, you, you, you have, you have the question. It's really, do you wanna have an infrastructure to supply water so that a large part of the, the town of Free Town could be, uh, drawn into a water line for the future?
I think, I think most of the people who consume water, who live in Free Town, who've had their water tested, I have, I have a low, which is in full proximity to the road. If it turns up, if it comes back bad after the, goes in, we'll deal with it. But I also have, on our property, I guess I could put another well in and who pays for that? It's supposition at this point, doesn't matter, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. But most of the people that I know that moved to the country, moved to the country to get away from the chlorinated and fluoridated water supplies. Not to plug, not to plug into it.
Suck down cats.
And most of the water consumption issues that I've seen with wells, domestic wells, in Free Town, is overconsumption, it's people wasting water, people who don't know how to manage their wells. But that's, you know, that's an educational thing, people, you know, people consume, that's what they do, so. I'll get off this whole box.
But there's no requirement for you to tie in, so if you wanted to put another well in, you're more than welcome to put another well.
Absolutely.
Whether it goes by your house or not.
In the city, people put wells in to irrigate their grass because they don't wanna pay the sewer charge.
Correct.
And obviously in Free Town, there's no sewer job.
The one thing we're really mindful of is that we didn't want there to be a betterment, we didn't wanna force people to tie in if they didn't want to. Like, I have a well, I don't have problems with it, so, you know, that would be a choice. But if I ever, if I ever, my well ever went down, I'd have that decision, should I tie in or not tie in? Anyway, any other questions or concerns right now? Because we're gonna be talking about this at town meeting too, so.
I understand that, but more and more tests have been coming up about water that has fluoride, water that's chlorinated, that comes from your cities, most of the people are getting sick from it and all this. I mean, you want that pumped into your school? You want your kids coming to the school where they're gonna drink out of the water? That, well, maybe somebody forgot the, the power went down here and shut down, maybe this.
Are you, are, are you asking if I wanna be able to drink EPA, DEP tested? This water is to.
Kevin, Kevin, be serious, you hear.
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on, Gary, Gary, have a little bit of respect. You've come in here, you've yelled at us, you've overtalked other people, I sat here quietly, have a little bit of respect, please.
All right.
Thank you. I take my job very, very serious. We test our water daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, yearly, okay? I can tell you this unequivocally, our water meets and or exceeds, just please hear me out, okay?
Go ahead.
Any and all regulations. Now, are there horror stories out there? Absolutely. I can tell you by us being proactive, we are avoiding those types of things.
I live it personally, Kevin, my wife is sick from that stuff.
I, not from stuff.
That's why I'm talking about it.
Not from stuff in our water.
No, it, yes it is, but you are covered by what you say is legal. And I'm not saying you're wrong, you're told, this is how it is, that's what it is.
This is a never-ending debate, I have people come in and say, I love my well water.
But you wanna put this in, you wanna put this in your school system? You wanna put it in the police station with it, you wanna feed it to the prisons?
You know what?
I came to the town of Fairhaven and they're always sending out letters to all people.
Again.
Okay.
This was not, I want everybody to be clear, this was not my idea, this was not the water commissioner's idea.
This is the.
It was the, but, just let me finish, please, it was the building committee's idea. We were approached with the question, how much will it cost to bring the water line down? We gave them their answer, they called us in tonight to talk about what the number is. There are a lot of questions that you guys have that will have to get answered at another time, relative to engineering, relative to the width of the road, quality of the water, all that stuff. This was the role of the water commission, it was simple. Could you coordinate with your engineer a report and or, um, um, uh, estimate for the water line? That's where we're at, that is it. So I apologize if I get upset, but, but you guys are very passionate, I've dealt with you folks on a lot of issues, you guys are very.
That's all you're saying, whoa, whoa.
And I, and I, and I appreciate, and I appreciate that. But I hope that you guys, you know, treat me, I treat you with respect, just treat me with.
What happens if something happens to you and there's some other schmo running your job and he ain't taking it seriously and he soaked on pills? We're all screwed.
Okay, we're done, all done, so, we're back to the.
No, no, we're not.
No, no, we are done, no, we are done, we are done.
No, I'm not done, I've always.
Excuse me, that's okay, you can keep talking, we're gonna move on with our meeting.
You keep talking.
We are done.
Our taxes, put the money over there.
We're done.
Kevin.
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll talk to you.
Basically, no, basically what you guys are trying to say is this water line.
I wanna move on with the meeting, we have executive session, we've, we've answered the question.
You know, I pay my taxes, I just wanna speak, that's all I wanna do, I'm done.
What is wrong?
Kevin, what is wrong?
I have a, I have a procedural question regarding the, the.
Okay, so.
Will you hear it?
Mark, Mark, for right now, we, we, we're gonna go on to something else, okay?
This is, this is regarding, this is regarding the notice, I'm just, it's just a simple question. You wanna, you.
Mark, what, what did we just say? What did, what, what did we just say? Mark, hold it, we're, we're moving on, if you wanna stay and, and talk at a special town meeting.
So come back at seven o'clock and address it in front of a hundred people, I don't have a problem.
That's, that's, that's fine, that's a good idea, Mark, okay, that's a good idea.
Okay, I'll be back, come back.
Seven o'clock.
But please, Mark, we need to go on.
Oh, I appreciate that.
So, does the board have any questions for the water commissioners board about the financing of the project for Kim? You're good, okay, is the board ready to make a recommendation, recommendation on the water?
Here's what I did have a question, just kinda.
Kim, can you come up for a sec, please? Kim, can you just, um, I guess, this one, rather small, just really quick, go over what we're talking about?
Okay, so the spreadsheet that's in front of you, it has the estimated cost of construction at five million. It's got the estimated cost of construction at five million. Um, it's got the estimated interest cost at four percent for twenty years because you do need to get the DEP approval before you can go through the state revolving fund. Four percent is the current adjusted paid bond rate, that would be there. So basically what it shows is how the debt service payments would work for twenty years, which is the recommended period of time. We're looking to repurpose the six hundred and fifty thousand that was originally appropriated for the water filtration project. What I've tried to do is break that up over five years, um, to kind of act as a cushion towards the debt service payment. Because as you can see, for the first year of the project, debt service would be four hundred and fifty thousand. The other, um, so we would use in the first year a hundred and fifty-eight of the six hundred and fifty thousand. Then the other sources to offset the debt service are going to be reducing the amount that we, um, estimate for allowances for abatements and exemptions. Um, it's, it's kind of on the high side and I feel that we can gain some ground there by reducing that provision. We're also gonna have some savings in, um, the reduction of the current debt service on the bond that we have for the storm damages from the floods. You'll see a bigger hit from that, in twenty twenty-four, we'll be freeing up seventy-seven thousand seven hundred each year on the debt service to help towards offsetting the cost. Um, and then we're also looking at an, um, increase in local receipts. We tend to be extremely conservative, only budget for local receipts for, um, calculating the tax revenue. So basically what this is showing is between repurposing, the appropriation, um, using some of the allowance for abatements and exemptions, savings on debt service for the storm damage, and then increasing local receipts, we're able to cover the cost of this war within the town.
One of the important things also is the fact that we are gonna parallel track, apply for the water revolving fund and the interest rate for that program is now at two percent, so there's, there will be savings in that.
Yeah, there would be about a million dollars of interest.
Would we be able to apply for the entire amount from that, or is that a limited, is it matching?
I believe, I believe it's with full amount. And if the timing had been better, we would have been able to, you know, just in terms of the initial startup, we, we would have been able to kick it right off and that, right now, it looks like we're gonna have to do a B N initially to line the project up.
And then pay down from there.
And then pay down from there.
And the other thing is the, the potential of additional revenues coming into the town through, uh, several tips that we have.
The tips will be.
Potential revenue, uh, in upcoming years, probably three years out. Uh, we are gonna have significant amounts of money that could potentially be used as, uh, part of a funding source for this project.
So, um, it is a doable project, um, I feel still, after all of this, it's a worthwhile project. So we just need a recommendation from the board, um, for tonight's meeting.
I recommend we go ahead with the figures, present things later.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Before you go, I'd just like to apologize to everybody that was here for my outburst. It's not often that it happens and I just, I was starting to take offense to the way I, not only myself, but the rest of the members were being treated and I thought something had to be said, so I do apologize.
I apologize as well, but we've been working on this for a year and a half. Our meetings are open, all of our meetings are open and anybody can ask a question. And, you know, we're just finding out some of this stuff now, so anyway.
They're all taped and broadcast, so...
Yeah, it's on, it's online, it's on YouTube, it's everywhere, so anyway. That being said, I'll see you guys at 7:00.
Uh, we're going to carry on with the meeting now?
Yeah, do you want to go into executive session?
While we do, maybe this real quick, maybe we'll...
I got a, I have two. Hey. It is on the agenda. Weekly public discussion, anybody here for the board? Yes? Okay, quick. Quick link around. Hey, guys, I want to get my chair to the next round.
Build in respect to, respect this thing? Lisa, did you just go quick?
No, it's weekly public discussion.
So, we're discussing?
So, they're discussing.
So, what's the difference between this wall and the last wall? Any difference?
So, we go to executive session, we can't... We're going to, we're going to discuss all that in executive session, but what's...
And then we'll have an answer, so maybe we'll talk to this. Are you staying for the meeting?
I guess I'm going to have some.
Okay. I could use your support.
What about deceased assist order on the night? I mean, it was just, it never went, that wall didn't go to court.
Again, executive session. Anything else?
No, I guess not.
I'm sorry. You know I'd have answers for you if I could.
We're going to go to executive session first and do all this.
First, so we would have answers for you.
But now, we're pretty up against it. Be back for a time.
These guys are all worried about their wells, but we all have wells too.
Exactly right.
Yep.
So, is anybody doing any water testing? Or is that executive session?
Yeah.
I have a question. I have Pedro, that's on, is that right? So, just because some of you, especially that gentleman with the hat, that was in the committee with, when this was all Excel going on, he was, today he stated he's so concerned with the waters in the well...
Okay, we're not going to get it because we're all out.
I'm just going to make a point, I'm just making a point. You all have to listen.
We're talking about two different things.
I know, but I want to...
You're talking about, sorry, you're talking about him as a zoning enforcement, a board member. So, that's through something else. This is something different. Excel is something different.
Yes, but the point, I'm just making a point. Back, today, they are so concerned about the water, the wells, which is, you're making a point, I think it's a fair point. However, we all have wells on our residents around Excel. No one was ever concerned then about the wells. And Excel with all the debris and all the toxic waste that's going into the land. So, why was it okay, why is it okay now, it was not okay then? Like regarding the wells, no one ever thought about water, about the toxic wastes from Excel, right?
I think there was a drainage, they were supposed to do a drainage study with the state. That's all through the state, all their drainage calculations, all that through the state, so... They were supposed to put line, concrete linings in the bottom of their pits and all that. Whether it's done or not, I personally can't tell you because I haven't seen it.
And the town has no responsibility on this?
The town?
Yes.
To do what?
We enforce this, we enforce that this was done, just like the wall.
We can enforce the DEP in the state, no. We can enforce our licensing and the hours of operation, all that stuff that we regularly try to do and we have to revisit all the time. Yes, but the water, what the DEP requires and how it regulates itself and ACOs, they enter into, we have no say. You've seen us at these meetings and we ask the same questions that you ask to them and they don't really give us any answers.
And DEP did not require storm water management.
We've been fighting with DEP.
Right, so how did they do that?
They did not require it. They looked over the plans and they did not require, DEP did not require it.
The town requires it. How come the marijuana facility was powered that they go through?
That wasn't through us.
That was through plant board and the size of the facility and there's, there's things they can't do.
It didn't go to the plant board, so it didn't have to be done.
Why did DEP not require storm water management? Did they give a reason?
That's DEP.
Yeah, I asked the question, they said they didn't require it, but they didn't tell you why.
We get the same, a lot of the same answers that you do, Leo. When you send your letters and say, why do you do this, and we get the same thing from you, nothing. It's not until we start going with the, with the representatives and that, then they start giving us some answers, but they treat us basically like they treat you.
So, I just want to finish my point too, is that gentleman was so concerned today, he wasn't concerned then when he could have overruled.
So, water board is concerned.
When he could have overruled, it was two against one. I'm going to finish, I'm going to sit down. When he could have overruled, it was two against one and he didn't know what he voted for or he admitted that...
Pedro, we're not going to go down, I'm seeing your frustration.
I'm just going to make a point and sit down. Today, he's so concerned, he wasn't concerned then.
You're taking somebody that's here for a different reason. He's here as a water commissioner.
He's here as a water commissioner. The water commissioners have nothing to do with that. Maybe he should be the one that's...
No, no, he's not.
Anything. He shouldn't have anything with it now. Because what he's done, we're paying the price today of Excel because of him.
Why don't you sit down?
I'm going to sit down, I said I was going to finish and I was going to sit down. That's all.
Look, your frustration level is just as high as my frustration level with this whole thing, okay? Since day one, and you know that, all right? So, I don't, I don't want to get in an argument with you. I want to have a mutual respect for one another about what the problem is. We're trying, daily, weekly, text messages. You don't understand. So, look, we're doing what we need to do and, yes, you do.
We have to live with it.
You have to live with it and so do I. So, now, we're going to go into executive session so we can have more answers for you.
Like I said, I was just going to make a point and I was going to sit down, but that's because of that gentleman because if he'd already just been, this would never have happened.
It's not because of that gentleman.
It is.
It goes back before that. You know that and I know that, so stop. Okay. Can I have a motion to go into executive session? We'll finish this stuff later.
I'll make the motion. You get to read it.
Yeah. Can I have a motion to go in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation? If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, Excel Recycling LLC versus Lisa Pacheco, Robert Jones and Charles Sullivan individually and as members of the select board.
Will you be coming back out?
And coming back out in open session.
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Hold the members, Mr. Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
And Mrs. Pacheco, yes.
I know the record, I reflect that I am recruiting myself.
Okay. Approved fire abatements for the month of February 2018. The amount is total of $57,868.01.
I'll make the motion that we approve the name of the abatements for $57,868.01.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, personnel board.
Personnel board, employment application, I say we hold this over to the next meeting.
Okay.
Any vote?
Yeah, you have to just hold on.
All right, we'll just hold that over to the next meeting. I have a length of service increase, change of status report for Kenneth Police to win, from the highway department head mechanic, 2184 an hour, to head mechanic, 2310 an hour. It's a length of service increase submitted by Charles Mack.
Make the motion to...
I have a second.
Second, sorry.
Motion made and seconded. Any dissent on the motion? Any or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, I think that's it, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do you want to hold it or don't hold it?
Holden, the application's the only thing holding.
Discuss approved hiring independent analysis?
Yes.
One of the four? So, okay, we can talk about it. So, we're looking into probably having an independent analysis of the current Excel folder. So, to ensure that everything's been properly done. Is that cool?
It's my question.
And then, Mark is looking into a part-time zoning enforcement agent possibly filling up the duties. So, that's just, he's going to look into it for us. Sometimes they're too close, closely related, you know, you have one person doing two decisions. So, we may look into separating the powers. Cool?
Cool.
Okay.
Cool.
Are you all set?
No.
Are we moving forward or do you want to wait on it?
I'd like to hear what Mark had to say about before we...
This we can do, he said.
Which one?
The hiring independent analysis.
Yes, but do we have somebody set up or do you want to just have a...
Why don't we, why don't we...
We're going to explore who we're going to have do it.
Yeah, why don't we discuss to approve, and then we'll come up with a criteria.
All right, I'll make a motion to discuss to approve hiring a part-time building...
No, no, we're just going to approve the hiring of an independent analysis to review Excel.
Excel file.
Yep. Are you making that motion?
I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?[1781.12]